Thank you, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Sterling Heights City Council to order. Please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them wisdom and courage to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Ms. Riska. Can we please have the roll call?
Mayor Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Saroski.
Here.
Mrs. Kosky.
Present.
Mr. Radke.
Present.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Present.
Mr. Yenaz.
Here.
And Mrs. Yarco.
Present.
Thank you, council. We need approval of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kosky.
Moved to approve the agenda.
Support.
They moved and supported. Any discussion? No discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Before we get into our agenda tonight, I want to make a brief statement. Two things, really. We have a light crowd today, but to the extent that anybody needs to use the portion in the back to remove their mask, that portion is set up for you in the back of the room. There is a speaker back. There is a microphone if you want to speak back there as well. If you are in the audience, and like I said, I know we only have a couple tonight, just ask that you keep your mask on if you can and stay seated for as long as you can and not roam around the auditorium. Secondly, it does sadden me to inform the community that former Sterling Heights City Council member and Mayor L. Martin, who turned 90 years old in November, died on December 24th of natural causes. Mayor Martin was elected to the very first city council in 1968, which was the year Sterling Township became Sterling Heights. The newly elected officials included Gerald Donovan, who was our first mayor, James Dunlop, our mayor pro tem, council members Anthony Dobree, Richard George, L. Martin, James McCarthy, and Stanley Ranko. Leonard Hendricks was our first city manager, and Paul O'Reilly was our city attorney. George Bunker was the city clerk, and this group represented change in Sterling Heights that has carried through over the last 50 years. L. Martin went on to serve as mayor from 1972 to 1974 and helped guide the newly formed city of Sterling Heights to a future filled with progress and many achievements. Sterling Heights' success is attributable in large part to the voters in 1968 and our forefathers, who held the reins in those early years, including Mayor Martin. He will certainly be missed. So on behalf of the entire city council, community at large, I offer our heartfelt condolences to Mr. Martin's family and friends. Please join me in a moment of silence to reflect on this loss and to honor Mayor Martin's service to the city of Sterling Heights. Thank you very much. That will move on to the next item on our agenda, which is a report from our city manager, Mark Vanderpool. Mr. Vanderpool.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I apologize in advance because I have a number of items to report on this evening, but let me begin with an update on the COVID-related matters going on, knowing that the city is still in a local emergency. And let me start there by showing the recent data that we have available. This is now just a couple of days old. So this is a chart that shows all the COVID cases by day since we've been able to get the data from the county starting on April 3rd up through December 30th. And I hope you can see, obviously you can't see the numbers that great, but you can see the trend lines here. And what I wanted to point out is, you recall how serious this was back in the early part of 2020, beginning in March, when we first declared the local emergency, the first city in Macomb County to do so. And the spike was quite significant. We were averaging just under 50 cases or so a day. And then you see the trend lines start to decline over the spring, late spring into summer, and then you see the spikes shortly after some of the holidays, and then a downward trend toward the end of summer, and then the significant spike that started in the fall. And what I wanted to illustrate with this chart is to show the gravity of the surge in October, November, and December compared to where we were back in March and April. Now, the good news is, is you can see from these trend lines, while we peaked shortly after Thanksgiving, there's been a notable decline since then. So what you could gather from that is that the Department of Health and Human Services latest order requiring for, unfortunately, more shutdowns appears to be having some effect. Of course, there's some other ancillary causes that may be resulting in the decline as well. But the decline certainly is noteworthy, and the challenge is to stand that decline. But even so, when you look at the latest data, just over the last week or so, even at that low point, you know, compared to the last 30 days or so, it's still around where we were back in March and April. So still very high. When you look at the rolling seven-day average for cases in Sterling Heights, by the way, all this data is specific to Sterling Heights. You can see, again, this kind of mirrors what I just showed you, the significant spike over the last 60 days and then the downward trend. Now, unfortunately, in Sterling Heights, since this started, and the data's been reported, we've had just under 300 COVID-related deaths in Sterling Heights. There's really no real good data trends here. I wish I could point to a significant decline here, but you can see it's kind of all over the board and still elevated numbers over the last 60 days in comparison to what we're seeing over the summer. So hopefully, this number will start to come down, of course, with vaccinations, that obviously everyone hopes is a long-term solution. I wanted to show this slide because when you hear the news about hospitalizations across the country, fortunately, in southeastern Michigan, the hospitals seem to be faring pretty well. This chart represents the Beaumont Hospital system across the region, and it's similar data for Henry Ford and some of the others as well. But this shows the patients with COVID-19 infection treated in a Beaumont hospital on any given week. And the good news here, again, is that the trend lines are going down, and we're nowhere near the peak of patients being treated for COVID that the hospitals were at back in April and May. So that's really good news. The capacity seems to be faring fairly well in southeastern Michigan in comparison to other parts of the country. So I thought that data would be helpful. Now, let me just point, let me focus for a minute or so on vaccinations because that's what everyone is concerned about. Now, as everyone may know, there are basically two major phases. There's a Phase 1 of vaccinations, and then there's three subsets of Phase 1, so it'd be Phase 1A, 1B, and 1C. And then Phase 2 is the final phase. What we're in right now is Phase 1A. And Phase 1A consists of, includes persons that are in long-term facilities, healthcare workers, those on the front line, so to speak. They are getting vaccinations as we speak, and that phase could be wrapped up in the next month or so. Now, within the 1A group, the county health department is vaccinating medical first responders. And I wanted to point this out because the city of Sterling Heights Fire Department requires that all of our firefighters be certified paramedics. So that means they fall into the 1A group. And so our entire fire department now, I shouldn't say the entire because it's not mandatory, some chose not to, but the vast majority have been vaccinated now in the fire department. So that's good news for the city of Sterling Heights that our EMS first responders now have been vaccinated. So hospitals are vaccinating the personnel, as I mentioned, and their systems. Many of them are mostly through that phase in terms of those that are in emergency rooms and treating COVID patients directly. Long-term care facilities are being vaccinated by CVS and Walgreens as coordinated through the state of Michigan. So there's approximately 400 long-term care facilities across the state. We have a number in Sterling Heights. Those healthcare workers and residents are being vaccinated onsite through this partnership with Walgreens and CVS. When I say onsite, that's the facility site, not the locations of CVS and Walgreens. This phase, this group of individuals is expected to be completed in the next couple of weeks. And then residents of other congregant care facilities, like assisted living, will be vaccinated by Macomb County Health Department in the ensuing weeks. So that could start within the next couple of weeks for sure. Finally, doctors' offices, dentists, and other medical providers that are not affiliated with the hospital system will be able to receive the vaccine from the county health department in the very near future. So near future would be anywhere from a few weeks to a month or so. Phase 1B includes frontline essential workers and individuals 75 years of age or older. That could start in a month or so. And by the way, the reason there's subsets for Phase 1 is that any one of these phases in Phase 1 can overlap each other. So that's a good, a strong potential as the vaccines start to roll out in a more robust way. Our police department is considered in Group 1B, so you can expect that the police department will get vaccinated in the next few weeks. And then Phase 1C includes other essential workers, the in-persons aged 65 to 74, and those over 16 that have underlying medical conditions. So those are the components of the very first phase. Again, Phase 1 is underway, and Phase 2 then is mass vaccinations with the general public. That is expected to begin in the second quarter of 2021. So right around the March timeframe, and the indications are that it could take months to get through Phase 2. So anywhere from a few months to potentially six months, it just really all depends. But what I wanted everyone to know is that Sterling Heights is in the 1A group. Our fire department's been vaccinated soon, our police department, and our long-term care facilities and assisted living facility residents will be vaccinated soon. I wanted to also provide a brief update on our facility, facilities that are now open. Of course, City Hall has been open all along, and the hours at City Hall are nine to one. We're closed for an hour, so employees can take a lunch, and that's because we have so many people working remotely, we just don't have enough to staff the City Hall facility during the lunch hour. And then the City Hall's open from 2:00 to 5:00. The library is currently open for curbside only and for home delivery. And those are the library's normal hours. So you can go to the website to see those exact hours. This community center opened once again. It had to close due to the governor's order and, I should say, Department of Health and Human Services order in early November, but reopened just yesterday. So this facility's open at 9:00 a.m., from 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. on weekdays and 9:00 to 4:00 on Saturday. Now, while it's open, really, the only use that is allowed right now is the walking track. So we hope that changes when the current order expires on January 15th, but we'll see. The senior center is open. The first day that it'll actually open up is tomorrow. The hours are Monday through Friday, 9:00 to 5:00, and then Saturday, 9:00 to 1:00. The ice rink is, of course, open. We've had very good attendance at the ice rink. In fact, so good that we have to eliminate some of the non-resident reservations to make sure that all of our residents have a chance to use the ice rink. But we hope that it'll be back to full capacity in a month or so. The nature center is open on Saturdays for by registration only, and that's so that we can phase back into a full opening there. But under the current order, it's not possible to do that quite yet. The 41A District Court is closed except for essential functions, but they do have full phone support and they have limited operations. So you can see the website to find out exactly how you can conduct ongoing business through the 41A District Court remotely. As it relates to businesses, restaurants and bars are still required to be closed for indoor dining. They're open for only carryout service or outdoor dining, which could be igloos, tents, and the like. As I mentioned, the current order expires in 10 days, around January 15th. So we're hoping for the sake of all those businesses that they're able to open up in a more meaningful way. And as I mentioned, starting out, the city is still in a locally declared emergency. That gives us the flexibility and latitude to make adjustments, and in some cases, approve administratively changes, like, for example, to our zoning ordinance. Rather than going through a 60, 90-day process, we can do it within a matter of days and allow features like outdoor tents and parking lots and igloos and the like to assist businesses. So there's a lot of COVID-related activity going on in the city. We work closely every day with the county health department and also the county emergency coordinator, both the fire chief, interim fire chief, and the police chief, working directly with them almost daily. I wanted to move on to another topic and let everyone know because those that live in this area of 15-mile road in Dodge Park may notice ongoing construction activity over the next couple of years. And that's because construction has begun on a two-year, $28 million project involving the Macomb Interceptor Sanitary Sewer. A 65-foot-deep shaft is being dug in the ITC corridor, so this is almost directly across from Sterling Heights High School, west of Shana Road. And this will allow the contractors to access the massive sewer. As a reminder, this interceptor serves 500,000 people from nearly a dozen communities in Macomb County. It's known as Segment 5 and will involve a major stretch of unreinforced, large-diameter concrete pipe on 15-mile road that needs to be lined to avoid any future catastrophic events. The project is expected to be completed in mid-2022. According to the Macomb County Public Works Commissioner, the $28 million project will not result in higher sewer rates to system users. It's instead being paid for, in part, with the $12.5 million lawsuit settlement paid in November to Macomb County after the Macomb Interceptor Drainage District Board sued three contractors whose mistakes, while working on the Oakland-Macomb Interceptor sewer to the west, caused conditions that eventually led to the 2016 sinkhole. Approximately 6 million of projects being paid from reserves and the remainders being financed with bonds spread over 20 years. So I wanted those especially that live in the area to know that that work will be ongoing. It's not very disruptive to traffic. However, it could be noisy at times. There could be noxious odors at times, but they're trying to keep all of that to a minimum. Also, we've had some inquiries about Shana Road. Some of you may remember that the Shana Road project started in the fall with some curb replacement, but due to the construction season, the vast majority of the work will not resume until the spring. So Shana from Plum Brook, between Plum Brook and just north of Clinton River, will be completely improved. So the pavement will be milled off, all the joints repaired, all the curbing that hasn't been done will be redone. In addition, there's four sections of bridge that will be reconstructed, so two in each direction. When it's all said and done, the project will be virtually a brand-new road. But we've received calls saying, "I thought the road was going to be completely improved," and we see nothing but repair work. And the repair work is just to get us through the winter. There's no way that section of Shana, especially by Clinton River, would have survived through the winter. So those are just temporary repairs. And in recognition of the Martin Luther King Jr. Day coming up on January 18th, which is a Monday, city offices will be closed for business. The offices include City Hall, Public Library, Parks and Recreation Center, Community Center, Senior Center, Nature Center, 41A District Court. Normal hours will resume on Tuesday. This will not affect refuse collection. Speaking of the MLK holiday, it is my pleasure this evening to introduce a very important resident in our community, John Myers III, who's a leader on the newly-formed Sterling Heights African-American Coalition. Mr. Myers would like to discuss a Day of Service initiative to honor the legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. And Mayor, at this time, I'd like to call on John Myers.
Mr. Myers, thank you for being here tonight.
[inaudible]
It's up to you, but if you're comfortable taking your mask off, we feel fine. Everybody's more than six feet away, at least 15 feet away from you. So we just ask if you could to wipe the mic down. There's wipes up there when you're done.
Sure. Perfect. Hope it's clean. Happy New Year, Mayor Taylor, the council, Mr. Vanderpool, staff, residents of Sterling Heights. Mr. Vanderpool, thank you for this opportunity to discuss an important topic here in the city of Sterling Heights. There are actually two items that I would like to present this evening. And the first item is going to be the MLK Day of Service on Monday, January 18, 2021. The best way to honor Dr. King's legacy is by taking direct action to better our communities. The Martin Luther King Day of Service is the only federal holiday designated as a national day of service to encourage all of Americans to volunteer to improve their communities. The city of Sterling Heights African-American Coalition and the Clinton Township Diversity Committee are teaming up to encourage residents and staff to recognize and celebrate Dr. Martin Luther King's life and legacy through a day of service. Myself, Sterling Heights Community Relations Director Melanie Davis, Clinton Township Diversity Committee Chair Carol Sullivan, and trustee Mike Keys have been working together, trying to support this initiative within these two communities. Those that participate in the 2021 Martin Luther King Day of Service will have a chance to win one-of-10 gift cards to local restaurants and retailers. Residents and staff will need to post a photo of themselves on social media, performing their act of service, and include the hashtag of M1, or excuse me, MLK-Macomb-GiveBack. And basically, those will all filter to the various social media platforms and kind of create a photo collage for us to look at and use in the future. Some of the ideas that folks can do to participate would be cleaning a park, or public space, or your neighbor's yard, or simply just going grocery shopping for a neighbor that is homebound, to try to basically create something of service in this COVID situation that we're in right now. And I would, basically, hoping to start off a program for the future, once we go back to normal in a non-COVID season. The second item that I would like to discuss is the 2021 Black History Month program. I know that the library published something in the Sterling Heights Magazine last month. And the Black History Month was created in 1926 by Carter G. Woodson and the Association for the Study of Negro Life and History. When Carter G. Woodson established Negro History Week in 1926, he realized the importance of providing a theme to focus the attention of the public. The attention has never been to dictate or limit the exploration of the black experience, but to bring to the public's attention important development that merits emphasis. The African-American Coalition and the Sterling Heights Public Library has presented an event called Thinking Black History. Thinking Black History will be a thought-provocative and timely session on black history. Some of the programming issues are to include In Our Own Voice, which is an African-American art presented by the DIA, Black History Storytime, and the Civil Rights Movement, with more to come. As stated in the magazine, more details as follow will be listed on Sterling Heights Public Library's Facebook page and also their website. We're working diligently to make this an event that all of our residents in Sterling Heights are able to participate in and give people an education on the black history and on the Black History Month and where it came from. That is it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Myers. We appreciate you being here and making those presentations and look forward to these two events coming up over the next, well, one in a couple of weeks and one in the month of February. So thank you again, Mr. Myers.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Vanderpool.
Mayor, that concludes my report this evening. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. That will move on to the next item on our agenda, which is an ordinance adoption. And this is to adopt the First Amendment to the Appropriations Ordinance for the 2021 fiscal year. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this item? If not, council, we need a motion.
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Saroski.
Resolved to adopt the First Amendment to the Appropriations Ordinance for the 2020 and 2021 fiscal year.
Support. They moved and supported. Any discussion?
No, thank you.
Counsel? Well, this was explained to us at our last meeting and when it was introduced. And again, I would just want to thank everyone in our administration for putting together the budget in very difficult circumstances and doing quite a great job at it as well. So without any further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Opposed, motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the Consent Agenda. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on the Consent Agenda? If not, council, we need a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kosky.
Move to approve the Consent Agenda as presented.
Support.
Been moved and supported with no discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on our agenda is to consider nominations to City of Sterling Heights Boards and Commissions. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? Seeing none, council, there are four openings, three boards. These are city council appointments. This was an item postponed from meeting, I believe, in November. Is there anyone who has a nomination for any of these three boards? We'll start with the Board of Appeals 2.
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Sarowski.
I just want to make sure who's... Okay. Resolved to appoint, excuse me, resolved to nominate Steve Weikai for consideration as an appointee to the Board of Ordinance to Appeals alternate, or sorry, they're just for alternates, correct? Alternate.
Yeah, they're all alternates.
Correct.
Yeah, alternate at the January 19, 2021 regular city council meeting.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion?
No, I think that he'd be a good addition. He's been working really hard with the, within the city, so I would love to have him on this board.
Counsel, any further discussion? No further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. There is another vacancy for Board of Ordinance Appeals 2 Alternates. Anyone else have a nomination for that? If not, we'll pass and go to Board of Review. One opening. Is there a recommendation or a nomination for this board? Pass on that. Zoning Board of Appeals alternate, any?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Radke.
Resolved to nominate Jeff Shahab for consideration as an appointee to the Zoning Board of Appeals alternate at the January 19, 2021 regular city council meeting.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Radke.
Just briefly, Jeff has been a long-term resident and property owner in the city. He owns several shopping plazas, and I think he'd play a great role on this board.
I agree. Anyone else, council? No further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. So we have the Board of Review and the Board of Ordinance Appeals 2 alternate position. Mr. Vanderpoel, the Board of Review is scheduled to meet, is it in March? Do you know?
That's correct.
Okay. So is there a, is there any sort of orientation process involved in that? I don't want to delay it, and we might need to, this one's been kicked down for a couple meetings now, so I just want to understand the urgency in getting somebody on that commission, if you could help.
Mayor, that's a very good point. That board does require some orientation, if you will, and I think if there was an appointment in February, you know, the first meeting would be ideal, that should be sufficient.
Okay. So then, I don't want to delay this past the next meeting because it is a two-step process, so we're going to just have to work diligently to find a qualified candidate. And calling on anybody who wants to serve on the Board of Review, that is an interesting one. It meets only in the month of March. It's a pretty intensive schedule during the month of March. I shouldn't say it only meets in the month of March. I believe it meets three times during the year, but March is the most, I don't want to say important, but it is, it is the one that with the largest time commitment. If you can look into it, you're reviewing property assessments and helping out your neighbors who might feel that their assessment is too high. So if you're interested in that, please contact one of us, submit a application to the city clerk, and we will go through our applications on file. So I would entertain a motion to postpone the Board of Ordinance Appeals 2 alternate position and the Board of Review position to the January 19, 2021 regular city council meeting.
So moved.
Support. It's been moved and supported with no discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay. I believe that concludes that portion of our agenda tonight, and we will move on to communications from citizens. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak under this portion of the meeting? If not, we will move on to reports from city administration. Mr. Vanderpoel, anything more tonight?
Nothing further, Mayor.
Mr. Kachubski.
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing tonight.
Okay. I'll open it up to council for reports or new business. Mrs. Kosky.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question. Mr. Washburn has resigned from the Appeals Board, Zoning Board of Appeals. I know that they have a pretty heavy schedule for a couple of months, beginning of the year here. Is there any way that we could appoint someone to take over Mr. Washburn's position? And if so, could it be the alternate that we have, Mr. Dunn Penn? Or do we have to find someone new? Has anything been done with their bylaws or any, anything so that we know how to handle the alternate? If the alternate will be automatically moved up, do we have to nominate them? Do we have to leave the alternate as an alternate and look for someone new to fill that position? Anyone have any comments?
Mr. Kachubski.
Thank you, Mayor. Mrs. Kosky, the process for how the alternate is going to work within that board has been under development. As it sits right now, they were appointed as an alternate. That time commitment is different than somebody who is appointed as a main member. So at this point, I would believe that the alternate would sit in that position as a called-upon alternate until such time as council appoints a new member of that board.
So we don't know when that's going to come before us, or?
We received Mr. Washburn's resignation very recently, and it should be on the next council agenda as a consideration item for you to appoint.
Okay, so we do have a full board there because the alternate will automatically fill in for Mr. Washburn?
Yes.
And then at our next meeting, probably, we will accept his resignation and look for a new appointment.
Yes.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mrs. Kosky?
No, that's it.
Counsel, anyone else tonight?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Just to piggyback on Mrs. Kosky's, so would the alternate have the opportunity to apply to be a permanent member of that board?
I don't see why not. He would have to, or she would have to resign that position and then apply for the permanent position.
Okay, so maybe we could communicate that to our alternate to let them know that if they are interested, they can at least put in an application for that?
Sure.
And also through the chair to Mr. Vanderpoel. Mr. Vanderpoel, when you were going through the phases for the vaccines, where do educators fit in?
Mr. Vanderpoel.
Thank you, Councilwoman Schmidt. That's a good question. I believe they are in 1C, but I'm going to have to confirm that for you. It's either 1B or 1C, but I'll confirm that for you and report to you and council accordingly.
Okay, thank you. Just want to wish everyone a happy new year and nothing further. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schmidt. Anyone else? Mrs. Sarowski.
And to follow suit, because Mrs. Schmidt did trigger a question I would love to ask. So, Mr. Vanderpoel, so the 41A court personnel, where would they fall in? Because they are not, certainly not first responders or police, but where would they fall in within our own city immunization plan?
Thank you, Councilwoman Sarowski. Mayor Protem, I should say. Actually, I'm glad you asked that question because I just had a conversation with the county emergency manager today regarding essential workers beyond first responders and city officials, including judges, those that come in contact on a regular basis with the public in an ongoing way would likely be in Phase 1B. But that still has to be finalized. It most definitely would be 1C, but that is still being worked out by the county as we speak. There's a lot of logistical issues there and so on, especially with 27 jurisdictions in the county. So in terms of timeframe, suffice it to say that that would likely be at, within approximately a 60-day period of time.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Vanderpoel. And then also, happy new year to everyone. May this year be a much better year than 2020 had been. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mrs. Sarowski. Anyone else? Mrs. Arco.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. Going back to the appointment to the Zoning Board of Appeals, as I'm looking at the applications on file, it does look like Mr. Finn applied to be a permanent member of the Zoning Board of Appeals. So then, I don't think he'd have to fill out another application. It's already on file. We just appointed him to an alternate position. If that's the way I'm reading it from here. Nothing further.
I think that's been our past practice, is that if an applicant has a resume or application on file, we can appoint him or her to any board, any board that we see fit. So, all right, counsel, anyone, Mr. Kachubski, anything to add?
That individual would just need to resign the current position as an alternate.
Understood. Okay.
Can I add one, ask one more question about that? So since he's already on as an alternate, can we do that as a one-step, or do we have to do the two-step process?
Mr. Kachubski.
I hate saying it, but it's set up as a two-step process, so.
Okay.
I don't think, it probably doesn't matter, though, since he'll be able to serve at the meeting, so there won't be any, there won't be any hole.
We'll serve as it is.
No gap. Okay.
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Arco.
Could we just go ahead and appoint him tonight, or nominate him tonight, and then appoint him at the next meeting? In order to save that time limit, is what I'm thinking, so that...
I mean, I'm sure we could bring it up under new business. I just wonder if...
It's too late now.
No, it's not.
This is the, are we under reports right now? We could bring it up, and we're under, you know, traditionally, I just call it reports, unfinished business, new business. I mean, we could do it right now, right? I don't know that there's any benefit to doing it right now, though, right? I personally would, my preference would be to wait, since he'll be able to serve, then I can review his application again, talk to him, see if he wants to serve on a permanent basis, and we, there won't be any gap of service anyways, right?
And I would agree with that because we don't know his current status, whether he wants to continue on as a full board member or not.
Okay. Yeah, that'd be my preference. Anyone else, council? Going once, going twice? Okay, well, I want to thank everybody for getting us back in person. It's, I know it's a light turnout tonight, but I think it better serves our residents when we're able to do this and we're able to do it safely due to a lot of hard work from our administration that goes above and beyond our parks and rack and clerk's office, everybody who puts time and effort and energy into making sure that we can have safe in-person meetings. So, yeah, we're certainly hoping for a better 2021. Want to wish everyone in the city a very happy new year. Want to wish my baby brother Nick a happy birthday tonight. And with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Support.
Been moved and supported. No discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. This meeting is adjourned.